Good evening, everybody. Today is Monday, October 17th, and this is a Moscow City Regular Council meeting.
Art?
I invite you to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is certified by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Art. And I will move on to the first thing on our agenda, which is the consent agenda.
I would move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second. We've got a lot of seconds going on. Okay, we got a motion by Art and a second by John to approve the consent agenda as is. I'll start to roll with Walter.
Aye.
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 Okay. We'll move on to the next thing, Staff Recognition Report. Jim, do we have anything tonight?
No, I have a staff recognition report tonight.
Okay. And I will move on to mayoral appointments, and I have two of them that I need to bring in front of the council. S. William Amador for Fair and Affordable Housing Commission expires 12/31/2018, and Kim O'Neill Farmers Market Commission, and that is the Chamber of Commerce position, which also expires on 12/31/2018. It would entertain a motion for...
I would move approval of both of those appointments.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion by Art and a second by Jim on the approval of these two. I'll start to roll with John.
Aye.
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 And aye.
Okay. And neither one of those folks are with us tonight, or I give them a chance to let us recognize them and let them get a chance to speak, but they're not here, so we will move on. For our item number four, which is a public comment and mayor's response period, allow 15 minutes for people to get up and speak on issues that they may want to talk about, as long as it's not on tonight's agenda or something that is in front of planning and zoning or board of adjustments. If you'd like to speak, please give your name and your address, and we will give you three minutes. I'm sure nobody rushed to the podium. We will move on to item number five, Proposed Lot Division, Lot 19, Block 5, Indian Hills, Sixth Edition. Bill Belknap will present. Bill, you've got the podium, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor and councilors. As is introduced, this is a proposed lot division of Lot 19 of Block 5 of the Indian Hills Sixth Edition to the city of Moscow. On your screen is shown the boundaries of the current boundaries of Lot 19 of Block 5. It's adjacent to Indian Hills Drive on the south. Mountain View is distant off to the east, and Blaine is located to the west, with Alteris Drive located north of the subject property. The subject property is owned, our residential office zoning designation, that with property directly adjacent to the west that is owned R2. General Business to the east, Residential Technology and Office District to the north, and Farm Ranch and Outdoor Recreation to the south. Within the RO zoning district for residential uses, there is a minimum lot width standard of 50 feet and a minimum lot area of 5,000 square feet or 800 square feet per dwelling unit. For resident, for non-residential uses, there is no minimum lot width specified within that zoning district, and there is no minimum lot area specified within the zoning district. The RO zone allows for a wide variety of residential land uses, including single-family, two-family townhouse, and multifamily uses. It also allows for a wide range of professional office and personal service uses within that zoning district. The proposal before you this evening is to separate and create a new parcel of approximately 1.27 acres in size. It would leave a remnant, remainder parcel of 3.42 acres. The proposed lot would be 180 feet in width and then range from 270 feet in depth on one side to about 340 feet in depth on the western boundary. Again, that minimum lot width was 50 feet, so it certainly meets the dimensional standard for lot width and lot area for a residential use of the property. This is just another view of that proposed lot, shown over the aerial photograph. The Public Works Finance Committee reviewed the request at their meeting on October 10th, 2016. At that point in time, there were no public comments that were received, and the committee recommended approval to the city council. And with that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Bill?
I just have a question about, you know, when you, when it shows the roads and it has the road listed as R2, and then you rezone it to RO, does the road designation change in front of the new designation if it gets changed?
So you may have seen a remnant. Typically, when we rezone property, we try to take the zoning district boundary to the center of the roadway. So this lot, at one point in time, actually, all of this property to this boundary may have had a R2 zoning designation, and there were a couple rezoning actions that happened after that time. And with, when that designation was established, it went to the southerly right-of-way boundary. So then, as this lot was rezoned to general business and this lot was rezoned to residential office, the new ordinances went to that center line. At some point in the future, depending upon what the zoning designation of the property to the south is, then we will correct that, and that will be brought up to the center line of that roadway. But I'm assuming that's just an artifact of the prior zoning designations on the property.
So, so the map is correct, and that's the explanation of how it got that way?
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions for Bill? Even though this isn't a public hearing, I know this was in front of Public Works and Finance on October 10th, and Susan Wilson spoke about it. Sue, you want to address this at all tonight? You're welcome to, if you want.
Yeah, I think Garrett Thompson would like to.
Okay, Garrett, if you want to do it, that's fine. Come on up here and let us know your name and your address, sir, and we'll give you a couple of minutes.
Well, we're excited that you're excited, Garrett. Okay, Garrett Thompson, 1010 Pine Crest Road, Moscow, Idaho. Honorable mayor and council members, I respectfully request that you approve this lot division. As you may recall, this property was initially five-plus acres of an unplanted parcel held to be flexible in order to respond to market demand. Whatever the case may be, in 2013, we rezoned the parcel to residential office to provide for additional mixed-use possibilities. We have received an inquiry and have a pending offer on the property, subject to lot division. Accordingly, I respect the ask that you approve this lot division. If you have any questions, I'll have Susan come up here and answer them for you.
Thank you, Garrett. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? I did invite Garrett up. Anybody else can talk on it as well? Okay. Counsel direction.
Well, I was going to say that it, this division meets all of the strictures of land use designations, and it doesn't generate any incompatibilities of zoning, so I think it should proceed along with no other provisions attached to it. So I would move approval of the lot division request with no conditions at this time.
Second. Okay, we got a motion by Art and a second by John to approve the lot division request with no conditions. As stated, I'll start with you, Walter.
Aye.
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 You have your division there. Thank you, Garrett and Susan.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to item number six, which is Safety Improvements Grant Application. We've got Les McDonald and Elise Anderson with us this evening to talk about some LTAC things, so, Les, you've got the floor, sir.
Good evening. Well, in our normal course of life around the city, we get to deal with some fun things every once in a while, and I think this is one of those. This has to do with some grant opportunities that have just arisen here in the last week or so. It's kind of left us scrambling around a little bit to get here this evening to talk to you about what is being proposed. I do want to say right up front, appreciate the good work by Nate Sur, our senior engineering technician in the Engineering Division of Public Works. He did a tremendous job putting together the scope of these four projects, the rough budgets that we're going to be talking about today, and the calculations to assess their viability as projects under these two grant opportunities. Alisa is, of course, our grants coordinator, project manager, I can never remember, specialist manager, there it is. She will be carrying the burden from this point forward to actually put together the applications themselves and get them off to the agencies for review, and carrying these forward, assuming the council is in agreement to carry these forward. So, what we have before us are a couple of opportunities, some of which we expected, one of which we did not, because it's something that just recently happened. There are a couple of funding programs that we have been working with over the years. The Local Highway Safety Improvement Program, LHSIP, we call it LCIP, is a program that we have used twice, well, technically, three times previously, and it is a program that is designed to address safety issues on local highways. So not the state system, but on the local roadways. It is the funding program that we use to obtain funding for the North Polk Street project that was just completed in construction here this, this year. It is also the program that we use to acquire funding to make crosswalk improvements and pedestrian improvements on Sixth Street between Jackson and Deacon. Now, if you'll recall, when we first went through that, we ended up moving the funding from that project to Polk Street in order to complete a bigger portion of scope on Polk Street. We subsequently then applied again for Sixth Street pedestrian improvements for crosswalks, and were successful in being selected again for 2018 money to make those Sixth Street improvements for pedestrian crosswalks. So those are the three that we've previously done under the LCIP program. The other project or the grant program is the Transportation Alternatives Program, and this is one that, it's fairly new in the system in its, this form, but it's really a conglomeration of some of the earlier things. Safe routes to school, the CMAC, which is the Congestion Mitigation Air Quality Program, things of that nature, all kind of got bundled together to become Transportation Alternatives, or TAP. So those are the, the two grant programs that we're talking about. There are, let me back up one more time before I jump into this. There are really three application processes that we're going to deal with right now. The first is the normal cycle for LCIP funding, which is fiscal year 2019. That call has just come out. Applications generally are due in January, early January, for the 2019 cycle. I just mentioned, we've got 2018 money for Sixth Street pedestrian crossings. So the normal cycle on an annual basis would be looking then for the 2019 program year. So that has just come out. But in addition to that, they identified some additional funding that came to the state of Idaho, that, part of which was then allocated towards the LCIP program for one-time opportunity under the 2017 program to get additional projects. I think it's $2.5 million in the state put into that, into that pot. So, we're actually applying for things under the 2017 LCIP program, which means construction is early as next year, which normally it's several years out when you go through these application process. So, what the Local Highway Technical Assistance Council, LTAC, has said, who administers these projects, is go ahead and apply for this one-time funding, this 2017 funding. If you are not successful, then we will automatically roll that application into the January application for the 2019 LCIP program. So essentially, one application gives you two opportunities under those two years of funding. At the same time, the TAP program has come out and said, oh, by the way, we also are looking for applications, and they are also due on the same schedule as the one-time LCIP money, which is November 4th. Pretty quick, and part of the reason that this came to council tonight, because we really don't have time to kick it to another council meeting in November, it would be after the date of applications. So, anyway, a lot of things going on all at once in a very short, very short timeframe, so we have identified four projects that would be eligible under these programs. They have to be projects that deal with either fatality accidents or severe accidents, which is called a Class A. There are also a Class B, Class C, and property damage-only accidents in the system. Under these two programs, it's either fatality or Class A. The TAP program has a further limitation that it has to be pedestrian bicycle incident, okay? In the LCIP, it can be vehicles. So it's a little broader. So we've identified three projects that are eligible under the LCIP and one under the TAP, so we'll talk about what those are. There's a lot here, so if you have questions along the way, please let me know. Okay, the first is the Polk Street Pedestrian Safety Project, and this is one we would do under the TAP because it does involve a pedestrian fatality that occurred on North Polk Street a few years back, and it is at the very north end of the city on Polk Street. So it's clear up in this area, right up here, and we'll zoom in a little bit. So this is Polk Street coming through here. This purple line represents the city limits, kind of wandering through there, a little hard to see on the overhead, but there it is, okay? And the Polk Street improvements to date with the work that we just completed under the LCIP program give us continuous sidewalk system, really from East Street all the way up to this point right here. And there's sidewalk all the way through here. Here's Clark Place, living facility on this end. This is the Moscow Height and Fur Building, for those that are familiar with that, out on that north end of town. Of course, the Mobile Home Parks up there. So, the fatality accident that occurred was generally right about in this area, vehicle pedestrian accident. When you look at this area, it's, it's similar to some of the other parts in the more rural sections of Polk Street in that there are no sidewalks, there's no curb, there's no gutter, there's some real light drainage ditch swales on the west side. The upper, smaller portions of Hog Creek are working along this easterly edge of the roadway. It's getting pretty small by the time you get this far north, but it's just a rural section. So it's, it's, you know, in some ways, not surprising that, you know, people are walking in the street or they're walking, you know, out of the driveways into the street, which is then, as I understand how this, this particular incident occurred. So the project that we're proposing would pick up, really right at the end of the existing sidewalk system by these apartments, install storm drainage to deal with the swale that's through there, so collect the storm water, but also then put in curb, gutter, and sidewalk with a tree lawn, with a planter strip, along the west side, all the way up to the city limit on the north end. So if we're successful at this, it would be a project that would then complete sidewalk on one side of Polk Street from really the, all the way down to the East Street to the north city limits, and give us a pedestrian route that should provide a safer corridor for folks that are using that, that area of town. So that would be under the TAP program. The work, as I mentioned, west side of the street, it's roughly 845 feet. There's the components, the drainage, curb, gutter, sidewalk, tree lawn. The budget is, we've estimated it is approximately $400,000. This is federal aid money, so then the local match is 7.34%, which is roughly $30,000 out of that $400,000 total. And I'm, you can hear me say approximately and about a number of times, because we haven't really done true detailed estimates on these to be able to pin down exactly. So what I'm going to ask the council for tonight is to, if you want to move forward, to authorize us to make these applications, but to give us a little leeway in terms of what that budget is. And this is generally where we think the number is. It could go up, it could go down a little bit based on as, the fine tuning of the scope of these as we move forward into the application.
What effect does that have, Les, on the local match then?
Because it's a 7.34%, it will go up and down with the overall budget.
Whatever that is.
Yeah. Yeah, so if you see a 5% increase in that project cost, you'd see a 5% increase in the local match piece, okay? So that's the first of those projects, again, under the TAP. The second one, which is the first of the LCIP projects, would be Illumination on Sixth Street Corridor, so Sixth Street, of course, has been right in this part of town. We are looking at the stretch that would go from Deacon, right at the, kind of the entrance to campus, over to Jackson Street, so that corridor right through there, that's in the Red Hatch. It's a very busy pedestrian corridor. This is the stretch where we are currently funded under 2018 money to make improvements to crosswalks, possibly some curb bulge type things to fix some of the physical hardscape that the pedestrians use. This particular project would work to improve the illumination. And it's been our goal for a while to extend illumination all the way through this corridor, essentially tying, you know, the heavy pedestrian campus area and that origin, you know, to the heavy pedestrian downtown central business district, that destination, and vice versa. A lot of people walk this, a lot of people ride it. The lighting out there is okay, but not great, and there's a lot of areas that probably could be a lot better than it currently is. So this project would work in that area, essentially some overlap for a good part of what we're doing with the 18 money. It would install roughly 22 of the vintage-style luminaires, the full cutoff LEDs, similar to what we have on College Street. Budget on this?
You got a question?
I was just going to ask, how does this mesh with the realignment of the eastbound lanes on Sixth Street at Jackson and the URA project?
Hold that thought.
Project.
I'll come back to that, okay?
Okay.
Because that's actually on our list today. Budget on this is approximately half a million, with a local match of roughly $37,000. It seems like a large number when you think about, well, 22 lights. But part of it is looking at, what is the electrical system that's involved? How much of the sidewalk do we have to disturb to either update the electrical system or run it to places that it doesn't exist today? Plus, you have to put in the light bases, and then, of course, restore the sidewalks around those, those types of things. So it's not truly just lights, I guess I would say. There's all the, you know, the things that come with that. The other thing to keep in mind is that because these are federal aid dollars that are involved, there's a lot of things that we have to add on to project costs, because LTAC has a, has a slice of cost. We have to have construction engineering dollars, we have to have design dollars, there's certain contingencies that are built in. So what you might think of as being, you know, okay, construction may be here, there's a number of add-ons that are required to be put into the grants. And they've done that because they've had problems in the past with agencies underestimating what some of those costs would be, and then you get, you know, halfway through your job and suddenly, whoops, we're out of money, and they come back to the agency and say, hey, you know, looking for more grant funds. Well, they're trying to avoid those kind of situations. So there are some mandatory additions that we have to put in that do tend to drive the prices a little bit. So that'd be the lighting, Deacon to Jackson. The next LCIP project is another illumination job. This would be on Third Street, so a little bit further north, and this would run from Jackson there on the east all the way out to just past Llewellyn, and it's at that point that we go, you can just see it right there, to the big overhead Cobra-style lights that you see on the highway all the way out to the state line. Those were installed from this point out to the state line as part of the five-lane section that was built back in the, I don't know, 2099, somewhere in there, back quite a while ago. But the lighting through here, a lot of it is still just typical wooden pole, you know, power pole installations with a luminaire stuck on it. Standard of Vista-type application at, you know, intersections throughout the community. We have done some lighting surveys on this corridor, because frankly, I've been concerned about how well these crosswalks are lit, and what we've found is that these intersections are pretty dark, and there really is a need, and there's a lot of pedestrian traffic north and south, going to and from campus, heading up to a lot of the apartments, you know, and homes that are for rent up here in the northern section of town.
Question for you on this, Les, that, that one bend on Third Street, right before you get to the furniture store, that's the worst one, kind of where the Nissan car is and that pizza place, Papa Murphy's. What kind of, this lighting is going to be more effective for that, I'm hoping, because that is a dangerous spot?
It's, it's a challenging intersection, Llewellyn, Third, and the highway coming through there, there's no doubt. This is an intersection that, in the long run, we would like to reconfigure to make more of a sweeping corner through here between Llewellyn and, and Third that would square up the intersection of the highway. You know, that's a project that's been beyond our ability to fund right now, so in the interim, we're working with it best we can. If you recall, of course, the tracks used to be in here. Those have gone away. We've restricted some of the turning movements that used to be, you could turn left off the Third Street and go back to the west, or you could turn into Third Street from, from the highway. Those have all been restricted. Yeah, there's a new, there's a crosswalk that's installed here now to try to keep pedestrians a little more, in a more predictable location. So all those things have been done over the years to try to help, you know, the overall safety net in that intersection. Lighting is an area that's really not been addressed at this point. It's still the lighting that's been there all the way along. So we would include lighting within, for that intersection, as well as all the others along this corridor. We would be just most likely alternating lighting back and forth all the way along the corridor, and, you know, based on the spacing that we need to give appropriate levels of lighting for pedestrians and for the vehicles.
John, you got a question?
Yeah, Les, I'm sure this has been answered, but I forgot what the answer was. With these new luminaries or lights, what is the lifespan on those? That may not be for sure, but I mean, you know, what?
You know, it really depends on the manufacturer and who's providing them and what their research has shown. You know, the LEDs typically are considered to have a much longer lifespan than you'd see on a sodium light, like the, you know, the yellow ones that we all grew up with. You know, anywhere from five to 20 times, depending on which study you look at. They seem to do well, and they're much lower energy. They have come a long ways in terms of the light output or the lumen level, so that you can actually see when you're underneath these things. Now, you think about some of the old, the old compact fluorescents that people have in their homes today, and everybody complains that, yeah, you know, you turn them up, but you just, you just can't see, that just seems dark. The LEDs don't seem to have that problem, and they do have a much better energy footprint and seem to have a much longer life. Okay? So this project would light that entire corridor. Certainly, we'd be looking very hard at all the intersections where we've got crosswalks to make sure that we've got an appropriate amount of lighting, so that those pedestrians that are in those crosswalks at those intersections can definitely be seen. Roughly 36 lights in this case, and a budget of, you know, a bit over $800,000, with a local match at that 7.34% of roughly $61,000. Again, these numbers will vary a little bit as we fine-tune the estimates, but that would be the third project and the second of the LCIPs. So back to, I believe, Art, it was your question about Sixth Street. How's it fit in with the realignment? Well, that's our fourth one, fourth and final, so that location's, of course, right down there at Jackson and Sixth Streets, and this is the parcel, it's labeled here as the Legacy Crossing Urban Renewal District. Of course, that whole area is within the district. That's the urban renewal site that is slated to be a new restaurant, mixed-use residential type facility, hopefully in the next year or so. That is the same area that we have worked with the district on additional right-of-way acquisition, so that we could then realign those eastbound lanes, particularly the eastbound through lane that is directly opposite the westbound left-turn pocket, which is a bit of an issue and a conflict, plus the bike lane that's in there. As you'll recall, we've talked about this project before. It is something that is in our budget currently in the 2017 fiscal year. It is something that we have gone partway through the design process already, anticipating that originally that we were going to fund this with city money and participation from the URA, both in land and potentially in some of their own costs related to utility undergrounding. In the workshop that LTAC put on in this room on Wednesday afternoon of last week, it became somewhat apparent that, you know, this is a project that probably would fare reasonably well in these grant programs. So we decided that, okay, let's add this in, and the accident history is there, pedestrian and bicycle and vehicle accident history, so it is eligible. This particular project probably has the lowest cost-benefit ratio of the four, as I recall. In other words, it doesn't fare quite as well in terms of the anticipated safety enhancement, you know, as, as with respect to the cost. It's got a cost-benefit ratio of six to one. Looking back at how LCIP has been, excuse me, LTAC has been funding LCIP projects, the, they've got us the lowest four-to-one ratios, and so we think the six-to-one, even though it's much lower than the other three projects, is still viable. So we thought, oh, let's, let's put it in there and see how it goes. If we are successful in getting the grant funding for this project through this program, then the money that we've set aside so far to date, obviously, you could deal with the local match, but it could then potentially be used for other projects related to streets around the city. Okay?
Just a question. Did, for them to consider things, did it matter that that hasn't been built yet?
The, the neighboring property?
Like, I know it's, it doesn't, it doesn't...
No, they're, they're looking at roadways. They're looking at transportation corridor safety, and what's adjacent to it, while it may be contributing, is really not their consideration. It is, are we having accidents within the corridor that we can fix through these programs? And whether it's somebody that's, you know, coming out of the neighboring business, or they're walking down the corridor from campus, and the incident's happening there, really probably doesn't matter to them, it's just that it's happening there.
Oh, okay.
So, one more thing I wanted to mention is that in the overall funding package, we've talked a little bit about the local match. For the lighting projects, well, let me start with North Polk. For the TAP project, we're anticipating that local match would come out of our capital program, the streets component, most likely. The Sixth Street Corridor lighting and the Third Street Corridor lighting would come out, the city's cost would come out of our streetlight program. There is potential that the district, the URA, might be willing to share in the costs, and that's something that Bill Belknap will be discussing with the board of the district, I believe, yet this week, if I recall, the possibility of participation there. So if the district chooses to do so, then obviously the city's cost for the local match would come down. And then that also would apply, or, excuse me, then the, the final one is the Sixth and Jackson realignment, which would be capital project funding. project funding. As I said, we have funding already identified that can go towards that project in that fund. Think that's all I have. So if you have any questions.
Elisa has walked up here. Let's let her-
Came up behind me.
She may be able to shed some light on some things that people will have questions-
One more slide, just real quick. Those are the, the things that will change. Of course, the eastbound through lane, the eastbound bike lane, eastbound right-turn lane would all be shifted to the south, along with the new curb, curb location and a wider sidewalk in that area, budgeted approximately $320,000, a local match of 24. And again, this is one of those, actually Walter and I talked about this earlier today, that 320 is higher than the amount we have budgeted in our fiscal year '17. And part of that, again, is those markups that you see on these types of projects that I talked about a few minutes ago. Yeah, I think. That was it. Okay.
Les? Go ahead, Jim.
I didn't get where the, the match for the Third Street won, the 61,000. Where's that coming from?
The Third, Third Street lighting would come from the city's streetlight program, as well as the Sixth Street lighting would come from the city's streetlight program, with the possibility that the urban renewal district might participate in some of that cost.
And then both of the others are the capital project funds?
That's correct.
Just one thing I, I'd like to add. Les did a great job of covering a lot of details. It was discussed at the LTAC meeting last week that ITD has also been given an allocation of funding under the upcoming FY '17 program for the LTIP. And so they're, they were really urging us to submit projects that were on the state highway because ITD has money and it would be what, what we call a joint application or a joint project. So there could be an opportunity, if we had the support letter from the state, from ITD in with our packet, that it gives it a better weight of being funded because they always encourage collaboration. There's possible, a potential, I was speaking to Leila today at LTAC, and with the lighting system for Third Street being on the state highway too, we might be able to see some participation from the state there also. So I think when you have a joint project, even though the cost ratio may be lower on that, I think it gives it a much better chance of being funded.
And this application has to be in by the 4th of November, correct?
Yes.
Catherine?
My question had to do with something originally that Les was saying, and either one of you can answer. It had to do with, like, if it doesn't get accepted in the 2017, it could be bumped to the 2019. But did you submit, you're going to try to submit four in hopes that, that one, one will go to '17, another will go to '19? Or I guess I'm trying to figure out, like, how you potentially see it getting funded. Does that make sense?
There, there are really, again, two funding pools here to work with. The, the TAP funds one project within the TAP, and that's, that's the one opportunity under that TAP program for this funding cycle. Okay, so that'd be the North Polk Street. The other three would all be under the LTIP for 2017. And hopefully, they'll fund at least one and maybe more. Those that would not be funded, whether it's one or all, would then roll into the 2019 pool of applicants. So the idea here is that, you know, they, they've got funding, they're looking for projects. How many people can pull them together in short order for 2017?
I'm going to go to John next.
We think we have the ability to do that. And, you know, there's the potential. You could be, see, see funding for multiple projects.
John, you got a question?
Well, I'm ready to make a motion if we're ready to go on this.
Okay, I'll come back to, if you want to make a motion, make it. We'll give the second, and then I'll go to Walter, because he's got something he wants to comment on.
Actually, I'll go to Walter.
Okay, Walter?
I want to compliment Elisa and Les and his shop for putting this together as quickly as they have. This, this meeting was last Wednesday.
Mm-hmm, that's right.
Packet came out at 10:34 Friday morning, if I'm not mistaken. So somebody really hustled to throw this together. I think they had some hints it was coming, so they had a little bit of head start on the rest of the field, but an excellent job of throwing this together. Les, if I may, one question on the intersection work at Sixth and Jackson. Under the current city budget, you mentioned that there is, there's money in the budget for that. Was there any other participation in funding that work in the city budget thinking? Not this project, but the city budget thinking?
Related to that intersection itself? The only funding I'm aware of related to that intersection or basically the realignment project is the one-line item in capital projects.
Okay, there wasn't any participation by the developer of that corner or by the URA or anything?
Hell, you had a-
I, I don't remember for sure.
I see where you're coming from.
Yes, there's a portion of that total project cost that is going to be borne by the agency. I think the city's share that was budgeted was the frontage improvements that were necessary to accommodate the turn lane. The agency was then going to pick up two elements. One was there's some additional cost for the undergrounding of the utilities that's above and beyond just the turn lane construction itself. So there was approximately $56,000 in charges from A Vista to pull the overhead utility lines through the conduits to be placed as part of the frontage improvement cost.
There's a pole in the way, or two?
There are a couple of poles that we were looking at undergrounding as part of that project. So there were some off-site boring, and there were some additional A Vista build costs. There was probably about $76,000 in utility expenses the agency was anticipating. And then the agency was anticipating covering the frontage from the corner down along Jackson to the agency's southern property boundary on the Jackson frontage. So, so the agency has funded that work in its capital, in its budget for FY '17. There is a half million dollars that's budgeted in capital improvements in the, the district, and that's where we anticipate to participate in that. Now, we weren't sure exactly the timing of that improvement related to the development of the site. Obviously, if, for whatever reason, this improvement or the frontage improvement has to go forward in advance of the development of the property, the agency does have the funding available to participate and cover our share of the project.
So if I may, Mayor, so, so the, the agency would participate, whether this is funded through city budget or through the grant programs we're looking at?
Correct. We were unaware, in the conversations over the last 24 months on this project, we were certainly unaware of this grant opportunity. We were preparing to fund it independent of that.
Thank you.
And the other piece to, to note, if I may, is the, the right-of-way acquisition that is coming from the agency, a dedication from the agency. So there's obviously some value associated with that to give us sufficient room to do the realignment.
John?
Yeah, I'd move that we authorize the middle of the four proposed projects for LS, or LH SIP and TAP, TAP, grant funding.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by John and a second by Gina to authorize the submittal of the four proposed projects, LH SIP and the TAP grant funding. I'll start the roll with Walter.
Aye.
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 Okay, go ahead, Elisa. Thank you very much, staff, for, there was a team of people that hammered this thing together, as Walter had mentioned earlier. And it just shows the professionalism of our staff, which we're all very, very proud of. So, good job. Thank you very much. Okay, we will move on to our next item, seven, F Street Water Main and Street Repair Update. Tyler Palmer, you have the podium, sir. You can let us know what is going on in that steep little stretch of F Street before the snowballs fly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselors, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I promised Gary that I wouldn't let us out of here until 10:00 PM, so I'm going to talk to the-
He's one guy that's got his gavel. It's me, son.
I'll go with what that guy says.
You'll be talking to an empty room.
All right, yeah, I wanted to come and give a presentation on the F Street, F Street Water Main Break that many of you are aware of. I, I think that it's a really good example of how the council's policy over time and the support that we get from administration can lead to really good outcomes. Because I, I think often in emergency situations like this, we think about the response in the context of the response itself. When there's a fire, we look at the actual physical fighting of the fire that day, when there's a water leak, when there's snow removal. But really, when we have successful endeavors like this, they happen in the buildup to these events. That's, that's when we really have success in these events is if we've prepared correctly, if we have the right staff in place, if we've provided the right training, if we have the right organization, we've developed the right standards. And so I think this is a good opportunity to just kind of highlight that. And, and I think it was, it was a good showing by the City of Moscow and our staff all the way through about how the departments come together to support one another and, and how all of those things can come, can contribute to having a successful outcome. So on Thursday, the 25th, we had a water leak. Actually, that was, I'm going to go back on, I've got my cursor. It was a, a large leak that we'd had reported over on F Street. As you guys know, it's the steep part of the F Street hill just off of Hayes Street there. But I want to go back a little bit from the 25th and talk about a few things that had happened in the buildup, the immediate buildup to this. You know, I talked about some of the things that take years to build, training of staff, good operators in place, a good system, good morale, getting the right equipment in place. All of these things impact our ability to respond to these types of events. So I'm just going to go back a few months. On March 4th of 2015, we updated our, our departmental water break SOP. This is just one of the processes that we went through over the past two years to update all of our standard operating procedures and make sure that we had a good procedure for events that we knew are, we know are inevitable. We don't want big water leaks, but they're going to happen. We don't want huge snowstorms, but they're going to happen. So we have to be prepared for those things. That's, it's, it's part of our job. And so we wanted to make sure that we have good standards because having a good SOP in those emergency situations is what assures that everyone knows where they're supposed to go and how they're supposed to operate. Shortly after that, on April 20th, Pullman experienced a large water leak that many of you may recall downtown. This gave us a really good example to have a tabletop exercise and test our SOP against a local event. We had the details from this event. And so in the immediate aftermath of this event, after talking with the staff in Pullman, we gathered the details and sat down with my water staff and tested our SOP. We said, okay, how would our SOP work in a large situation like this? And it gave us a really good chance to test it out. And there were some changes that we made based on that exercise. We said, wow, we, we found some gaps in, that, that we needed to fill to make sure that our response would be adequate. From that meeting, we generated things, a lot of detail went out, you know, as far as staging of equipment and materials, making sure that we had shoring and the proper pieces to repair a large leak in a timely manner so that we wouldn't drain our tanks. We can maintain pressure in the system. We don't have to go on boil orders, those sorts of things. So we could try and anticipate as much as possible these events. Even, we, we even generated a, a water emergency messaging memo that went out to all staff so they'd know what our messaging should be during these situations and so we could have consistency in our messaging. So that went out in the short aftermath of that, that leak on the 20th. You can see that memo went out on the 29th. So those are just a few things in the immediate buildup to this water leak that we'd done as a department to assure that we could respond to something like this. So on the 25th, we got the call, and we had a large leak.
25th of?
The 25th of August. We received the phone call at about 10:00 AM was when the leak was reported. We knew from the call that it was a fairly large leak. Mike Parker, our, our water distribution supervisor, who's now our water utility manager, responded to the scene. On his way to the scene, called me and said, hey, I think we've got a big one. So at that point, he, he, he got to the scene, did, did the immediate triage, started the immediate triage with his staff. And so we had wastewater conveyance staff that responded, who were in close proximity, street staff and water distribution staff. And they did immediate triage. They, you know, secured the scene, made sure everyone was safe, and tried to do as much mitigation as they could to keep properties from flooding. So by 10:15, we had staff on site after getting the call at 10:00, and temporary traffic control was underway. Almost immediately, we started coordinating with administration. We got a lot of support from Gary, Jen, a lot of help with getting the messaging out. And so we put it out on social media and went door-to-door with the people affected in the area. At 10:30, we, we had an incident command meeting. So we got together with everyone that was going to be impacted that we needed on the immediate team and broke into incident command. And incident command, it's, it's a, it's a system that was, that's taught through the federal government to handle these types of situations. And so we assign out things like site commanders, communications people, people who are doing materials, people who are, you know, even taking care of things like feeding the staff who are on site, making sure that they have meals and they're staying hydrated, safety officers, all those things. So we break into the appropriate size incident command, depending on the incident that we have. And so we were able to really have a systems awareness and think about the broad impacts of the event. So that happened at 10:30. And so, incident command was formed. By 11 o'clock, we had an MUTC compliant traffic control plan in place. And by 11:30, we had a shutdown plan and, and we had our response plan organized and put into action. So, you know, all of these things just take a lot of coordination. You know, these, these are all pictures from the scene, the flooding that was resulting from this very, very rapid leak. All the equipment that needs to be staged on site. When you think about what you need to respond to an event like this, it takes, it takes a lot of people and it takes a lot of equipment to get out there and, and remedy this situation. Things that, things that you may not even think about, just the, the equipment that we have to shuffle together to make sure that we can, we can do this job. We, we pulled pumps from the wastewater treatment plant, some dewatering pumps, so that we could dewater the hole. It's a quick-moving hole, and we can't turn the water all the way off and create a negative pressure situation. And so we have to try and isolate the leak, do some excavation, open a hole so we can then get down and see what's actually going on. By, by about noon, we had the water to the point where we were starting to pump out and starting to excavate so we could see what was going on, at which point all customers had been contacted and notified by door-to-door. We'd stopped in door-to-door, we'd put out social media, and a press release was being generated through administration. We also took bottled waters around. You know, we always want to make sure that, that while we're doing this, that we show people that we're considering what they might be going through and as much as possible trying to mitigate the effects of, of leaks like this. So again, at noon, all equipment was mobilized to site, and we started the excavation. By 4:00 PM, we were able to locate, excavate, and, and, and open up the water leak and get a visual on it. We ended up having a 20-foot length of 55-year-old, 10-inch cast iron water main that was split the whole length. And so, you know, this is, it's, it's something that happens. It's, it's a good reason for us to continue to aggressively update our infrastructure. Because when you get these old cast lines, you, they can, they can cause issues.
If I may, real quick, the picture on the right, this, this is after the pipe's been removed and placed on the, the flatbed trailer. And there you go, that dark bit you see there, that's one of the, one of the holes that's formed in the line. And there's multiples along the length of this pipe. And there's also a crack that runs from gap to gap to gap as you go on down through that. So when it went, it went pretty well.
It, it split the whole thing. And so, yeah, and, you know, water under pressure is an amazing thing. It, it really is. It, it generates so much force. It's, it's, it's pretty impressive. And that's why safety in these situations is, is just massively important. It's, it's a dangerous job that our guys do out there and, and our gals. And we're really proud of the work that they do. But this, you know, it's, it's a lot of pressure. So, yeah, this is, this is the pipe as it came out. And, and so this is the street section as we set it up to accommodate the work that we needed to do out there. We ended up needing to excavate, since it was a 20-foot length of pipe, for the immediate triage of the event. Here's another hole here in the middle that you can see in the pipe. I mean, there were some big holes, and then there's cracks that run all the way in between. Large excavation, we, we, our guys got it cranked down. They got the, got the water pump down. And by 11:00 PM, they had a 30-foot trench dug that was over six feet deep in some places. It was shored, and it was prepared for pipe replacement. You know, we had, our staff's so dedicated. I mean, they just, they don't complain. They stay out there and they just keep working, often in terrible conditions. And they're just so committed to what they do. They understand the importance of providing water for people, and they, they really take it seriously. And it's, I'll tell you what, it, it gives me a lot of comfort. I live three blocks from here, and we drink this water, me and my wife and my daughters. And, and I am so confident having the professionals that we have being the ones taking care of our drinking water. Because I know that they're going to do it, and they're going to do it right. So by, by 11:00 PM, they had that ready for replacement. They started to cut out and replace that pipe at 11:00 PM. They had the pipe, the patch installed by 11:45. In 45 minutes, they had it out and had the new pipe installed. By midnight, they were backfilling and flushing the pipe and sampling. You know, the sampling's very important. As we put in these new sticks of pipe, we have to make sure that we're disinfecting everything and sampling appropriately. So with that, we put out a boil recommendation. It's not a boil order at this point. It's just a recommendation until we get our samples back to show us that the water has been cleared and it's, and it's safe to drink.
I heard Jim got a question for you. When you get splits, failure of cast pipes like that, is that due to corrosion or is that due to earth shifting causing stress on the pipe and cracking?
You know, Jim, it, it can be a lot of different things. With the old cast pipe, it can be very brittle. Pressure spikes can cause it. You know, there, there can be strain in the pipe. Sometimes when the pipe's laid, it's laid with more deflection, meaning there's a little more bend in the pipe. And so those areas can, can be more susceptible. Sometimes the soil that is backfilled in can cause, can be a more corrosive soil. We don't have terribly corrosive soils here on the Palouse. We don't deal with that a lot. Here, here on the hill, this pipe was under deflection. This section of pipe was under deflection. And it's an area that has a little bit higher pressure. And so I imagine that that is- And so I imagine that that is probably two of the contributors. And then just the fact it's a 55-year-old pipe that's, that's in those conditions that can cause that. So by 1:30 AM, we had water back on. So, you know, to have, to have a 13-hour response to an event of this size from the time that we were notified to the time that water is back on is really impressive. I mean, having been through a lot of these types of leaks, I, I just, I couldn't be prouder of the way the guys responded and the speed with which they responded. This was a large leak. We estimated it was 1.3 million gallons that came out of this and, and the guys responded really well. Subsequent activities, things that we have to consider in the aftermath because once we get the trench put back, as you guys know, it's, it's not paved out there currently. And there was a lot of work that went on after that. We're not done at this point because one of the things I love about our department and the city and the support that we get is that we like to do things right. If we're going to fix things, we want to fix them right. And so in the aftermath of this, we had heavy, heavy involvement from a lot of people. First and foremost, our Public Works Director, Les McDonald. The morning after this leak, I had to get on a flight. I had to leave for a flight at 3:00 AM and Les really took over the response from there and, and just ran the thing and made sure that everything ran smooth. And having a resource like that was really, really helpful to the guys. But we, we ended up looking at this and saying, you know what, we really need to replace this water line because it was brand-new asphalt and it ended up being a large section of asphalt that was damaged, as you can see in some of these pictures. Here's, here's some pictures of the guys working through the night, getting their shoring in and out so that they can get the pipe button back together. But here's some of the asphalt pictures that you can see it just, you know, absolutely undermined this asphalt. And so, you know, there was the initial work to be done that we couldn't just open the road back up because we were unsure of the structural stability of the road. And so we always have to consider that. We don't want to send a bunch of traffic back on a road and have a sinkhole underneath it and have somebody really hurt themselves. And so we had to get someone in immediately to pull the asphalt so that we could analyze what the base looked like and then determine how much asphalt needed to be replaced. When we looked at the amount of asphalt that needed to be replaced, the last thing we want to do is put a whole bunch of new asphalt over more ca, old cast iron pipe. Because, you know, the worst thing we could do is put that asphalt on, have the roller get out on the asphalt and all of a sudden spring another leak and then we're paying for $40,000 in asphalt twice. And so that's, that's the last thing that we want to do. And so our engineering department really stepped in at that point and did a fantastic job. They got plans put together. As you guys know, it's, it's late August when this leak sprung. By the time we get the asphalt peeled, we're into early September. And here, north of the 45th parallel, asphalt gets harder to get as we get later in the season. And we're relatively geographically isolated. We don't have a ton of asphalt providers and their schedules are all slammed because everybody's trying to get pavement down this time of year. And with relationships that we've built with, with some of the contractors in the area, they were willing to help us out and come in and do this job at a reasonable rate to come in and relay a water line so that we have new water line under the entire patch section, the new asphalt. So we're able to get that in, get that tested, and then we're scheduled to pave tomorrow. So tomorrow, it should pave back.
Nice. When will it be open then?
Once it paves, assuming that it does pave tomorrow, we're scheduled tomorrow. Obviously, this time of year, the weather can throw a kink in that, but, but we really anticipate this week. It'll pave in a day and once it cools, we can open it, Mr. Mayor. So that's, it'll be really quickly after it's, they're done paving. So, you know, within several hours of being done paving, we'll be able to open that street.
Couple of points I want to make to you, Tyler, and you're absolutely correct. Well, there was a ton of people involved in getting this put back together and doing the work. I was down there in the morning after that, walked around and talked to neighbors and just BSed with them and stuff. And we, and the flyers that were put out, the door-to-door information, there was a good line of communications. And the people that lived in that area were very, very good. I mean, I only, the only few people that I talked to afterwards were really tickled by this, the expedient work that the city workers did. And that was a reflection of seeing all those guys in that hole. And I'm using that generically because there are men and women involved with this, but collectively as a team, you're absolutely right, got this thing done. And that's kudos to everybody that was involved in it. So it was a big deal for us. But I, I think that kind of thing, you talked about the drills you went through, learning the experiences from Pullman and applying those to you guys' plan and having a little bit of a drill to learn how to do these things, absolutely wonderful that you do that. And that's exactly what's going to happen because, you know what, this is going to be something that'll happen again somewhere. We know that. Walter, did you have a question for?
Yes, sir, thank you. Your stick that split was 20 feet? So how many total feet did you end up replacing?
They ended up with the initial, with the initial replacement, they ended up opening 30 feet and they ended up replacing a little over 20 feet in order to accommodate a dresser coupler on each side. A dresser coupler is the type of connection, it's a big, basically a big gasket that you put on one side of the pipe and then it slides back and it tightens with bolts to hold that in place. And so it ended up being a little over the 20 feet in order to cut into each side and get a good clean cut.
So you haven't replaced any more of the ductile iron?
The entirety of the-
A ductile iron, the cast iron?
The entirety of the cast iron pipe within the seg, within the area where the asphalt was open has been completely replaced with new pipe.
How many feet?
I can tell you. Let's see.
I think we're roughly in the 300-foot range.
270 is what's sticking in my head, I think, about 270, 300 feet.
And Tyler, what, what's the total cost of this effort, effort from break until you open the street back up going to be?
Get to that here in just a second. So, so, yeah, that's, uh, just, just, yeah, the coordination that that took and the support. We very much appreciate the support from a lot of departments. You know, our, our police department was great and our fire about getting WICOM notified so they knew to reroute things. As I mentioned, our administration department was very supportive and helped us through that. Our engineering department was just critical in getting this done. One of the things I really must mention is just, and the mayor touched on it, our citizens in the city of Moscow are just great people. You know, they're, they're so understanding and supportive of the work that we do. In the aftermath of this, I got two thank you cards and several emails. People were sending me pictures of the event that they were just, they were excited to see it out there and they're proud of the work our guys were doing. I had one gal that sent me about 400 pictures. She was just throughout the event, was just taking picture after picture. She was just so impressed with the work that was happening. It was just, we, we see that all the time. You know, we get that every time there's a snowstorm, a water break, anything like that, the people just line up to, to support and to thank the, our employees for what they do. And it's, it's nice to have that level of support in the community. This is, this is the plan that was generated. Not a lot to say here, but the, so the water line was replaced. This, the, the area in gray is the area where pavement was removed and the water line was replaced all the way from one end to the other where the pavement was removed. We also added valves that will help us better isolate this section if there are problems in the future. And that's one of the things that we have a program now exercising, all of our valves and checking valves so that we know which ones are working, which ones aren't, which ones, and where we need valves so that we can make sure that we can minimize the impact of these events. Because one of the really bad is when you can't get them shut off and you just continually lose water, you drain your tanks, you end up with a negative pressure situation, you go on boil orders, that's, that's when it gets really bad. And so luckily, we were able to avoid any of that. So this is the crew that was hired. A local construction company, Albright Construction, came down to install the water line. This is them installing the new water line through that stretch. And then to touch on Walter's question, so the, the initial break repair costs, when we take, when we count in the staff time, and this is, this is, you know, this is a rough estimate. We didn't pull everybody's exact hours than, at their exact hourly rate. But an estimate is about $15,000 in staff time and equipment cost. We pulled the equipment cost from the, from the FEMA rates. FEMA establishes a rate for different types of equipment per hour. And then the parts and supplies for the initial repair were about $3,500. And so we were about $19,000 into that initial repair that was completed in that first 12 hours to get the water back on. In the follow-up replacement, for the replacement water line, the water line replacement itself, the water line associated costs were $39,856. And then to repair the street, to replace the, the road base and then the paving is, is going to be, that work obviously hasn't been completed yet. These are the anticipated costs that we have based on the bid. $42,632 for a total of about $82,488.
I had a question for you. When you were talking through everything, you were talking about paving and you're like $40,000, you kind of threw that like as an easy number. Does, is that, did that number for you have to do with an usual amount of paving or what it costs to do a paving of a street? Like you were like, that's kind of a usual?
It, it varies based on size of job, time of year, immediacy that you need people in with. This number is pretty common for what we see for smaller patching type paving like this. It's not way out of line, especially for late in the year, we need you here now type numbers. And so, and, and so the $40,000 was based on this number. We had this number already and then that number lined up fairly well with what we'd anticipate for this time of year.
Thanks.
So that's, that's all I have other than this. This is, you look at all the people that, all the people that were involved in, directly involved in making a repair like that happen. And these are all, you know, committed city of Moscow employees that without any one of these people, it doesn't happen. And that coordination and that preparation and then just having the morale and the people that want to work together, come together to make this happen is what leads to a successful outcome like we had.
That's why it takes an army and a team, Tyler. Good job.
So with that, I'll answer any questions you might have about this.
Jen?
Just a quick comment. We mentioned this afternoon or this evening that we didn't have a staff recognition piece. And I think this speaks volumes about staff recognition in the city. Their communication efforts and everything that went into this particular project are great examples of the wonderful people we have working for us. And so it's tremendous to see all these faces here because guaranteed, this was a real success story in the face of a, a bit of a crisis and it came off really well. So appreciation to all those folks that helped out.
Absolutely. Kudos. Thank you, Tyler, very much.
Thank you.
Good job by the entire team. Okay, well, we will move on now. That was the end of our agenda, so we'll move on to reports.
I'll start with you, our Public Works Finance.
Yeah, we had a Public Works Finance meeting last week and all of the issues we had there, we talked about tonight and dealt with. A week or so ago, we had our regional meeting over in Colfax where we had an interesting discussion about insect-borne diseases and found out that we're pretty safe here in the Pacific Northwest as things stand. Went off to an economic summit in Boise last week, but I'll leave that for you, Mr. Mayor, to address. Also coming up on November 3rd, we have the Hope Center fundraiser and seats are available at the table there. Please see Judy Davis if you want to attend that event. And other than that, let's see, Sustainable Environment is coming up this Thursday. URA Thursday morning as well. Tuesday. Sustainable Environment on Tuesday. And URA Thursday. Yes.
Catherine?
P&amp;Z was canceled, so that one didn't happen. But 1912 Development Facilities Committee met. There's an action item. They're going to start considering bids for the roof, but they're hoping to start those in February and they're interested in a metal-type roof material. There were a lot of minor repairs done on the building and Jenny kind of referred this as a typical list. And the list had like varnishing the doors, repairs to the fire suppression system, slate tiles on the elevator, the fire alarm, the ice machine, just quite a list of things with the building. At present, there's been $97,251.08 raised and fundraising letter's going to go out October 31st. She had said to really finish this building, you need $3 million. So she's hoping to raise a half a million per year. And then during the winter market and kind of keeping that, she will be doing tours at 10, 11, noon and 1:00 on the days of the market, every day of the market. And if she can find others to do tours, she's going to do that because she wants everyone to see the upper floors. So she's going to tour the second and the third floor. And then the other meeting was Moscow Pathways. They need two people on that commission, so there's a real hunt for people. And they do have a new member, Robert Heckendorf. He's a professor of computer science and he's a real walker and biker, so it's kind of exciting. He talked about living in Fort Collins and it was a platinum walking bike city. So anyway, they, they talked about the path tour, the grant for the underpass and the pedestrian path. They're looking, they were just wondering about all those things. And they have updates on the completed pathways and they want to review records for who's responsible to do what. And they were super excited that there were stripes that had been done on the pathway and they were kidding with the Leitak Trail, like, we got stripes and you didn't get stripes. So it's kind of funny. And then between the rec center and the stadium, there's a huge root and they're trying to figure out, the University of Idaho maintains it, but how do you get it fixed? And so they talked about it as a real safety issue. October 15th, they tabled at the market and, let's see, I think, oh, a potential idea of naming a section of Paradise Path for Christine Armstrong, who was a semester at the University of Idaho and is a three-time gold medalist. And so they're, they're thinking about using the path as other incentives for naming.
Thank you, Mayor. Two meetings since the last council meeting. On the 10th, the Fire Department Board met. Several items of interest there. They brought four additional people into the ambulance company. They authorized paying the fees for 25 firefighters to go over to Seattle to climb the 70 or 72-story Columbia Center Building. Any of y'all like to volunteer, I can put you in touch with the chief. I think, I think mainly the young guys do it. I can't believe how, you know, doing that. So they will be doing that. They will send at least 25 over there. They closed out their fundraiser as of September 30, having reached 114% of their goal or exactly $100,000. They're working, looking forward to their 125-year celebration next year. Plans continue for that. And the annual Christmas banquet for the Fire Department will be at the Best Western again this year. And I believe the date is December 3. Watch your box for invitations. On the 12th, attended the Farmers Market Commission meeting. It was more or less the Jen Pifner Show backed by, by her assistant, Gary Redner, working with Farmers Market Commission on strategic planning. They're meeting virtually weekly, not quite, twice a month, she says, from now through the end of the year. Yes, sir.
So when do you, when do you have to sign up to, to do this stair thing on the, for the Fire Department to climb up the tower? What's the deadline to be signed up if you want to do that?
He's not even smiling. He's serious.
Oh, yeah.
I am serious about it. I think I can raise a lot of money for the Fire Department if I climbed all the stairs and-
See me after the meeting, sir. We will make it work.
And there were some women probably-
I'm sure, I'm pretty sure everybody on this desk here would sponsor me a dollar a floor if I did that.
With that, we'll go to you for reports, Jim, for your-
The only meeting that I've had in, since the last meeting is Transportation Commission met last Thursday and Captain Kwiatkowski of the Police Department was there to talk about bicycle-vehicle traffic interactions and clashing things and what can possibly be done to improve that situation. Because we've got a number of situations where people are riding bicycles against traffic. They call them bike salmon. When they're riding upstream, then, you know, and it's, it kind of causes trouble and gives people on bicycles a bad reputation and, and also people in, in cars who are disrespectful to people on bicycles and what they're trying to do to mitigate that and diffuse that situation with education so that, he said, they don't have so much trouble with the kids because they get the safe routes to school instruction on how to ride your bike safely. But college kids will tend to ride around without lights and upstream and things like that. So they're trying to do some outreach on that and get people a little more conscientious about riding bikes and people in cars a little more conscientious about being, expecting bikes on the roads in Moscow because there's more and more all the time. Kevin Lowly gave a report on the sidewalks improvement program that's going on and they put in 82 PED drops in the last cycle. And so, and about another couple of miles of sidewalk around town. So there's progress going on, even though we still have like 55 miles of missing sidewalks. Still working on it and making progress, so that's good. And Mr. McDonald gave a presentation about the complete streets policy and the Transportation Commission was considering whether or not we really need that since most of the things that are in the complete streets policies in other cities, we already do as a matter of normal course. So maybe we don't really need to have another layer of bureaucracy there. That's all that went on there.
Gina?
Bike, bike salmon? Is that what you call that? Okay. I got to go to the Arts Commission meeting on October 11th. We have, it's a little bit of a lull, but we are discussing the mayor's arts awards. We were discussing the process there. Art walk is done, all the good stuff is, or all the fun stuff is, is done. We will also have the Smithsonian coming in end of this month. And that'll be a beautiful exhibit. If you've noticed, the last couple of weeks, we've had lots and lots of painting and preparation work happening. So that'll be very soon and pretty excited about that. We also, I also had the opportunity to go- We also, I also had the opportunity to go to PKC meeting. I was, however, double and triple booked that day, so I was not able to attend the PKC meeting. So, I have no update there. I will head to a Parks and Rec Committee meeting next week.
Hey, John?
I just got a couple, I'll be quick. Went to the Tree Commission meeting and a couple of things, they, there was a, a good discussion on the heritage tree planning, and that is still ongoing. And they also had a fairly lively discussion on two other things. Number one was the trees, three trees down on the corner of Third and Jackson.
Hit that towards you, so they can hear you.
They were just giving me-
We're getting hand signals over there, John.
...the table.
And IDT is the organization that required three trees to come down, those trees have come down, but the owner of the project is going to replace them. And the engineer was involved at the meeting, and so, between the Tree Committee, the engineer and the new, and the owner of the project, we will end up with some nice new trees. And then, I came here, I was double booked today, but we had a meeting with the CHODO for affordable housing, and stopped by and took a look at the house we're building on Morton, it's coming along really well. And then, we are looking at two different spots to put in either some row houses or probably row houses, one at the north end of town, one at the south end of town. And we're just starting that process, so it's got a long way to go.
Okay. Good enough. On Art had mentioned, on the 5th, we had the quarterly breakfast at Colfax, and there was a number of us there. And that was kind of an interesting thing, it was about the Zeta virus, and I thought, well, you know, what can you talk about that? But the guy did quite a presentation that was very informative, and he also talked about ticks and Lyme disease and those sort of things. And really, this guy was from all over the place. He'd been all over the world, basically, because he was a military guy as well, and he moved to the Palouse and his family to the Palouse, because it's one of the safest places in the world. I thought that was kind of an interesting thing, so there you have it, folks. I thought that was pretty cool. On the 6th, we had the Orchid Awards, and Catherine was there as well at the 1912, and that was a fun evening.
It was good.
There was some really neat things that some folks have done with their properties and upgrading them and remodeling them and stuff. It's just, that is a fun event, it was really, really enjoyable. And then, on the 11th, last Tuesday, Art and Jen and myself went to Boise for a Breaking the Barriers talk that Brian Ellis had did. And there was a group of, it must have been between 80 and 90 of us there altogether. And basically, what it was, was local governments, the economic development summit that tied in with legislators, and some of the discourse that we have. And so, that's kind of an interesting thing. And so, there's more to follow with that. We're going to have these things every six months, the next one will be in Coral Lane, April, I think, or something. But it was pretty interesting, and so, perhaps, those are some of the things we can get through with our legislators.